To determine sort of how the floor, you know, the final, you know, obviously depending on, you know, what we have to adjust and what we have to do.
Yeah.
What impacts.
Yep.
So, um, I think that's a couple of days or a month to have this done as soon as possible. But it is.
Yeah, which is just a marketing. Yeah, it's just trying to get that right, console, background, everybody. Cause I'm not in all backgrounds. Well, match. You know, it's probably gonna be just like.
Right, and then I can kind of rally the troops, try to have it work that fast. And it's gonna be positive about it all? Ready to go?
Yeah, yeah, think about all the different meetings.
Oh, yeah.
And there's hurdles, yeah.
And then the way that I see it, I'd say it's four or five, typical final, for all grade ground. And then you know, with, you know, the last, okay.
Mm-hmm.
I would love that whole part, but I'm really proud of that to begin with. Most of our points are from strapping, so the presentation here is a little bit.
Yeah.
Today? Okay.
Great.
Just gonna tell questions.
Okay.
And then, you know, we're the only sign from this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do a little bit of sign and thank. Just because they're, if they're negative, you want us to pull them back.
Yeah.
Small things, so we start the long, so it's always.
Yep. Are you gonna be in it for a long time?
Oh, yeah, for sure. But I also just kind of ask you very few. And then, you know, just to know if you're also. You, uh, show what you need to, but I said.
Good evening, everyone. It's, um, five fifty-nine. We have about a minute to go, so we're gonna act at this time. If you just take, if you have cell phones with you, if you just take those and place them on vibrate, we would appreciate it, and we'll get started momentarily. Thank you so much. At this time, it's now six o'clock, and we're gonna call the town of Mangonia Park Town Council meeting of October seventh, twenty twenty-five in this session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Albeir.
Uh, here.
Councilmember Davis Quinn.
Here.
Councilmember McConnell.
Here.
Thanks so much. We do have a quorum. So at this time, let us stand far as far as invitation, please.
Father God, as we come together tonight, Lord God touching in spirit and in truth, Father, guide our words, guide our thoughts, as we make decisions for others, it is in the mighty name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. All pleads of allegiance.
My pleas of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, and to this world with the pleasure to be the justice for all.
Thank you so much. You may be seated. So at this time, we're gonna attend to our agenda, and let the record reflect that Councilwoman Webb is now joining the dais. So at this time, we're gonna attend to our agenda. Are there any items to be added, deleted, or substituted on the agenda?
Mister Mayor, uh, one item, seven B, we're adding some additional information. Uh, we're adding a third quote, where it says, "Request for the approval of emergency sewer lateral repair." We have two quotes. We did get a third one in, and there's a copy of it, uh, in front of you and also on your tablet. It's from the Hentrilland Group, and the amount is thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five. Hentrilland Group, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five, and that's all the amendments.
Thank you so much. And before we proceed, let the record reflect that Vice Mayor Johnson is also on the dais. So at this time, if there is anything else to be added and or deleted? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
May I have some more?
A motion has been moved and seconded, um, that we approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Full same sign. It is carried. And for those who are with us and who may be online, watching us as well, if we have any items that are annotated with an asterisk, uh, that means it's on our consent agenda to be considered, at this time, we have no items annotated. Are there any items to be considered for the consent agenda?
None from staff.
Thank you so much. So at this time, we'll move on in our agenda, seeing that there are no items. Uh, if you're following along with us, our next item is item four, and this is Proclamations and Presentations. We're honored to have with us our school board, um, member from our district, uh, here with us, uh, Edwin Ferguson, and so we're gonna yield to him as he come forward and do his presentation. And again, we thank you so much for taking the opportunity to come before us.
And Mister Mayor, while he's making his way up, just for everyone's information, you have a copy of his presentation in black and white on the desk, but you also have a color version on your tablet.
Okay, thanks so much. Appreciate it. So at this time, we yield the floor to our school board member.
Thank you, Mister Mayor and council, town manager, town attorney, uh, constituents in the audience, and, and online, I am Attorney Edwin Ferguson, your school board member for District Seven. As you all know, I like to go to all the district, um, cities inside of District Seven each year to give you all a report on how the students in your respective cities and towns are performing, and then make some suggestions in terms of actionable items that, that we as constituents can do to help improve the performance of our students ongoing. So I think it'll be page three, maybe four, the slide deck. I know that persons that may be looking at this online, there's a QR code, and I would encourage anyone who has interest in kind of verifying the information or just referring to the information that I'm going to be relying on, uh, they can download my slide deck through this QR code. That's kind of a common thing that I do at any public presentation. I like to make sure that we're both on the same page and that you see, uh, and know what I know. Sometimes I'm missing things. Sometimes staff and I may be in error, so that would be a chance for you as constituents to call, you know, kind of bring that to my attention, and hopefully we can get it right and come back with a more thorough presentation in, in the, in future events. Uh, but in any event, as it relates to the town of Mangonia Park, we'll briefly discuss the, the results of the, the primary schools that, that service the town of Mangonia Park, which are West Riviera Elementary School, which is a stone's throw north on Australian, uh, John F. Kennedy Middle School, which is also maybe, maybe three or four miles away from the town, and then Palm Beach Lakes High School as well. Now, you can definitely skip that page about the Dolphins right now. I am officially boycotting the Dolphins for at least the next two or three weeks af- after Sunday's, uh, debacle, and no need to bring bad, bad energy into this, this chamber. So for those of you who know me, I, I'm always speaking about the importance of early childhood education. I kind of started saying something, I guess it's kind of my little mantra now, those who start ahead tend to stay ahead, those who start behind tend to stay behind. It's not an absolute, but the data does tend to bear that out. Uh, so before we delve into the, the performance of our Mangonia Park students, you can look at that slide. It's directly behind it. It speaks to kindergarten readiness. Uh, it's titled FL twenty-two kindergarten readiness and FY twenty-five grade three ELA. The reason I did that is because I want you to see the correlation between this, um, the school's kindergarten readiness three years ago, and then how that same school's third grade students are performing in English, language, and arts. So for purposes of not trying to embarrass, maybe being perceived as trying to embarrass any school, I didn't actually list the name of the schools that, um, these scores come from, but I will represent to you that all three of these schools are District Seven schools. So for example, school one, an extremely low kindergarten readiness score of twenty-one percent. Basically, what that means is only twenty-one percent of the kindergartners are what you deem to be kindergarten ready. And so again, just to make sure that we all are on the same page, things that the district does to assess whether a child is kindergarten ready, is, ready is the following. Do they understand, do they recognize their name in written form? Clarence, Williams, Sarita, for example, can they identify colors? That's orange, white, I kind of have a shade of gray on. Can they hold a pen or a pencil, a writing utensil? Maybe not as important as, as it once was, because we type so much now, but there are five-year-olds who can't properly grip a pencil. They have what I guess you call the baseball grip, as opposed to like alligator hands, if I can speak like a five-year-old. Uh, can they recite the alphabet? Can they count to one hundred? Basic things like this. Are they potty trained? Uh, believe it or not, there are a large number of children who enter our, our kindergarten who are not potty trained at five and six years old. They're coming to school with pampers. And so as you can imagine, that causes a huge disruption to the educational process of that child. Child is soiled themselves, teacher has to stop, help change the child, and then get back to teaching. These are things that I would like to see us improve on. But again, just so we all understand what I'm saying, when I say kindergarten readiness, I wanted to kind of deviate for a moment, but now back to the slides. Uh, medium kindergarten readiness, forty-nine percent is about the average kindergarten readiness score here in Palm Beach County School District right now. Um, and then you see how that schools, that, that same class of kindergartners, two, three years prior, twenty twenty-two, they were at fifty-nine percent, which is about, about at or slightly above average for ELA in third grade for last year. And then a high-performing school, you see where seventy percent of the kindergartners demonstrated mastery of those and other things that I just mentioned to you all. And that, that same school, you see eighty-two percent is the number of their students who are, who are able to attain at least what you would consider a passing score in their ELA examinations. I also want very briefly for y'all, just to look at the, the growth. The low school, twenty-one to twenty-eight, so only a seven percent gain. The middle school, ten percent from forty-nine to fifty-nine, and then the high, higher school from a seventy to an eighty-two. So again, it kind of supports what I said, those who start ahead, they tend to stay ahead. Those who start behind, they tend to stay behind because there's a lot of what I call, again, my words, not anyone else at the district's word, kind of a triage type of education, where you're just trying to get them, just get you through this lesson because we gotta take this high stakes testing at some point. I gotta kind of push you, I gotta push you, gotta push you, but not necessarily making sure that the child has proficiency, that they can readily recall in years two, second grade, for example, or first grade would be years two, three, four, five, six, et cetera. There is, there is a correlation there. So inside of this, um, inside of this packet of information, there's a treasure trove of information that parents, I would encourage, and, and other concerned citizens to use with our youth. So my children are now nine and seven, but when I first began down this path to become your school board member, really even before then, as a state rep, I was made aware of these, these metrics that we use to assess whether a child is kindergarten ready. And so I made it, we made it, our goal to, that our kids at two and by two, really, were doing things that we said we wanted to make sure a five-year-old can do. And so my, my children are smart, but most of our children have equal levels of intelligence. I just think we have to practice with them to make sure they master these things, because there's really no reason that a child should not already have these things well mastered by five. Um, and if you, and if they have mastered them, as you can see by the, the slide that I have here, where you have a school with seventy percent, the overwhelming majority of their kindergartners are kindergarten ready, the sky's the limit for them, because now they can take off. Now we're not doing all this remediation, which too many of our children are just being remediated. So in third grade, you're doing things we, by right, should have already passed in first grade or second grade, and how does that really affect them now as an adult? When the rubber truly meets the road, as an employer, I don't have any loyalty to a child, depending on whether they come from Mangonia Park, West Palm Beach, Riviera, Pointe, and Delray, Boca, it really doesn't matter to me. The only thing that ultimately matters to me is can you do the job for which you're being paid? Because guess what? My clients don't really give a hill of beans about that either. It's very transactional. So we have to prepare our children for that hard, that not even harsh reality, just realities of adulthood, whether they're gonna be entrepreneur or a high-performing employee, they have to show mastery of these things preferably sooner than later. Again, the die is not necessarily cast, but there does seem to be a correlation between proper preparedness for kindergarten and future success as a student and ultimately as an adult. And that would be the next slide after. I'm, I'm, forgive me, y'all, I'm kind of used to looking at it, um, on the, on the computer screen, so I'm managing as best I can. But, um, that next slide that's behind the one that I've kind of been, um, harboring on for the last three or four minutes speaks about things that we should focus on as parents and concerned citizens in terms of high-frequency words. So we call them sight words. Um, a lot, there's dolch, D-O-L-C-H words. So again, when you download the, uh, the slide decks, you'll see a large number of words that children are expected to have mastered by the end of their kindergarten year, first grade, second grade. Again, in my mind, I'm thinking that a great number of these words can be mastered in ages two, three, definitely by four, um, as far as that goes. So we know that children tend to have a, a much shorter attention span than we as adults, nominally shorter, because some of us don't have much of one either, but I digress there. But just consistent five to seven to ten minutes a day with a child going over five to ten words can pay off exponentially by the time they hit the kindergarten. So I would encourage parents and other concerned citizens to take a look at all the information, uh, that's set forth, uh, in this packet, and it will pay off, I think, uh, in short time for the constituents of Mangonia Park, and as a result, it will greatly benefit us as Palm Beach County residents at large. Bright Future Scholarship. So many of you may know, uh, some may not, but the state will subsidize our students who want to go to college if they show a certain level of academic proficiency by the time of graduation. So I included a slide deck here. Um, it doesn't work as well for me just to kind of verbalize it to you. It is sort of dense, but there's a lot of information that will tell you as, as parents and concerned citizens, hey, what Johnny, what Jane needs to do, um, through high school in order to qualify for a hundred percent subsidy, seventy-five percent. I think it even goes all the, all the way down to fifty percent. This can be the difference between a child who wants to go to college, going to college, and not. We understand that every child doesn't want to nor need to go to college, but for the ones that do, if you hit those metrics, the state still will subsidize you, and we've been paying for it, uh, since I was in high school, which is quite, quite some time ago now. So I think it will behoove us to take advantage of things that we've set up, um, as, as a state for our, for our future generations. There's some additional information. There's more like patting the back to me, so I don't want to waste time with that, but you know that we were able in short time, speculative record time, to get a high school on a construction budget, um, in Riviera Beach. That was something that was promised. Um, again, going back dating myself, but that's fine. Thirty years ago, we were talking about building, the need to build a new high school in Riviera Beach, and so we're building a new high school in Riviera Beach that'll open in twenty thirty. Um, Lincoln Elementary, um, one of the schools I attended during my elementary years unfortunately has to close to make room for, uh, Riviera Beach High School. Uh, so this will be the last year of Lincoln Elementary. We'll do, uh, ceremonies later this year to kind of, uh, celebrate all the success and everything that Lincoln has meant to this city and the surrounding cities as well. And then next year, we'll start with, well, as soon as school ends, we'll start with renovating the Lincoln site for Inlet Grove. Inlet Grove is a high school slash middle school that we're contractually required to house, make sure they have housing, and so in order for me to kind of do the Rubish Cube, to, to look out for the greater inches of Riviera Beach, I lobbied and ultimately got five of the, well, four of the other board members to agree that we will move Inlet Grove to the Lincoln site, and then, uh, begin with the construction project of Riviera Beach High School, which initially we're saying is a hundred and fifteen million, but I can't imagine it being that cheap by the time we actually break ground. So we got a hundred and fifteen million dollar project of Riviera Beach High School. You have North Tech slash Riviera Beach Prep for those of us who are interested in career technical education. It's getting a fifty-six million dollar facelift and improvement. The Inlet Grove site, currently Lincoln, but soon to be Inlet Grove, is at least twenty million dollars earmarked for that renovation. Um, and then West Riviera, many of you know, because the greater majority of students who attend elementary in Mangonia Park, as it was explained to me, go to West Riviera. That's a whole new campus that's gonna be opening next year, and we spent upwards of, if not over thirty-eight million dollars at that site as well. That part is not my, I can't say I had anything to do with that, but those other things, I'm patting myself on the back. So I've been a busy bee in my three years on the board, um, and I'm, and I actually want to thank you all, because I think when I look back at the numbers, Mangonia Park has always really supported me, so I feel like it's important that I support you all by doing smart things on the board and not getting bogged down in any sort of foolishness, to keep the main thing the main thing at all times. Um, trying to move through in case you all have questions. My goals for this upcoming year, so CTE, um, again, I went to college, um, but that was my path. Things are different now, and everybody doesn't necessarily need to go to school. Um, if you're somebody who has an entrepreneurial bent that doesn't require, say, a college degree, we need to be focusing and supporting you right now, seventh, eighth, ninth grade, prime that pump. So by the time you graduate and get that diploma, you're already ready to go, suitcase ready, whether it's Sarita's, whatever, or you want to work for Quince, whatever, for four or five years, and then come out on your own, that's, that's where I think a lot of our children should be focused on. And to that point, because we're so close to the water, the Riviera Beach High School, one thing, there are not many things that I'm actually insisting on, assuming I'm on the board, if I'm re-elected, uh, next year, but we have to have a marine, um, pathway for students who want to work like Baravovich, Viking, and things of that nature. Even six or seven years ago, those corporations were telling me that starting salaries were at the sixty and seventy thousand dollars. I know people say that it's expensive to live down here, but I struggle to imagine how an eighteen-year-old with a seventy thousand dollar check can't find some type of, what, what they would deem to be affordable and acceptable housing here in our local area. So I think they should have that. I want it for them. So that's one thing I'm definitely pushing for. We're gonna be doing some other charrettes. I'm bringing the head of Career Choice, Dr. Geraldine Johnson, and Fred Bart, um, along with myself, maybe even the superintendent, to listen to the community, to find out what the community wants for programming at the school. I think the days of the district kind of huddling off to itself and then kind of bringing something out, that doesn't work, particularly in the face with the vouchers and the private schools and things of that nature. You gotta do something that the people want, because if you don't do it, they definitely got options to go other places, and that actually would be the worst thing as a general rule for us as a society. So I think, um, and maybe because I've always kind of ran my own business and, and had to get out there and hustle and market and things of that nature, we have to do things that are fresh and attractive to the community. So to that end, we're gonna be taking the show on the road, sitting down, listening much more than we speak, to what the cities is saying, hey, we want to see of these schools, because I'm pretty confident there's gonna start being kind of a consensus of points that you're gonna hear from the overwhelming majority of, of people who come to these events, and then it will be the district's job to come up with programs that meet those requests. Also, ESE centers. So my son happens to be autistic, um, so that kind of has helped me, uh, get some better familiarity with it, but there are a lot of, and, and also I had the financial means to provide him the accommodations that he needed. But there are a lot of families, and this was particularly made relevant during the COVID shutdown, who don't have the means to pay for that ABA, their, their alpha beta alpha, for example, therapy that a child needs at ages two to three, that can make the difference between whether they're self-sufficient in their adult years or needing to be with you as the parent or caretaker, and that's probably something that as parents that we don't necessarily want. Our child's have to depend on us as we mature through life, and they're still kind of in a state of dependence, subs- severe dependence, so we don't want that. So we need to have greater numbers of ESE centers in our schools. We've been open for business now for several years now, but we have a dearth, a lack of ESA cen- ESE centers in District Seven. So that's something that I thought I already had struck a deal with the prior deputy superintendent, but I give him a pass because he's not the superintendent down in Monroe County, so maybe some things got lost in translation. He was pushed for his dream job or whatever the case may be, but I won't be missing it this time. So somebody's gonna, we're gonna get something straightened out on that, because it's really just that important. We can't afford to waste a year in anyone's life, particularly a child. So, um, I'm gonna be having some intimate conversation with the superintendent, chain of command at all times, don't really bounce around in departments. I don't think that's my place, but I'm gonna impress upon him that this is something that was agreed upon last year, and I want to see it through fruition for school year twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, native language support, particularly for students who are of, of Haitian descent. We, I was advocating for doing dual language programs, but we don't have the, we don't have enough people who are fluent, uh, verbally and in writing to have a dual language program that's Haitian Creole, but what we do have is enough people who can do, can provide what we call native language support. So that would be a situation where Ms. Johnson and I, uh, both speak Haitian Creole, and I, I'm her, I'm her student, and let's say she's trying to teach me a math, uh, something in, in math that given day. She's trying to explain it to me in English, but I'm just not getting it. And so for that moment, she might be speaking like Creolish or whatever the case may be, like Spanglish, so she'll say it in a way that I understand it for the purpose of me, oh, aha, I got it, the light is on. So, okay, now I understand it, and now we can start working, working on the repetition and really cementing that in my mind. So that is something that, working with the prior superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, Mister Tierney, I was able to get some consensus with the district, and so that's something that we are authorizing now. At any schools where we have a Haitian Creole population, if there's a teacher there who is at least verbal in Creole, even if they can't write it, then you, you're permitted, you're, you have the authority, authorization to use your Creole to help the child learn, and I think that's a win for the district as well. Um, and with that, oh, the academic results. We have three schools, uh, West Riviera, JFK, and Palm Beach Lakes. I mentioned that before. So West Riviera actually hasn't been doing all that well, in my opinion, um, in terms of what the district average is and what annually West Riviera's averages in terms of kindergarten readiness. Unfortunately, you have, you would have, when you all go back later, you can click on the hyperlink for Mangonia Park, and the data that I'm relying on would be be there. I just have it memorized. I've looked at it several times now. Um, they haven't been doing that well in terms of kindergarten readiness year, year over year, and even with their English language arts, it kind of undulates. I don't really like that. I don't like a up and down, up and down. That makes me a little nervous, a little queasy. I like to see ascension. So we don't have that going on in West Riviera. Uh, one thing that I proposed and the board agreed unanimously is that we're gonna bifurcate the schools in, in Riviera Beach. It hasn't really been done anywhere in Palm Beach County, at least in the area where you have these, these type of demographics, kind of lower, lower middle to lower economic demographics. So what that means is, starting next year, West Riviera will be a pre-K through second grade school for all students in Riviera Beach who don't live inside of Washington's, um, school zone, because Washington was, was always designated to be a school of walkers, so we don't have really any buses that go to Wellington, I'm sorry, Wellington, Washington. They all walk to Washington. Any child that's in third through fifth grade, though, they'll go to Bethune Elementary, and we think that that's gonna allow the teachers in those most precious years, remember where you start ahead, you tend to stay ahead? So if I have a pre-K or a kindergarten who may be struggling in, uh, kindergarten readiness, English language arts, or math, or whatever the case may be, we don't have to do that hard, stop it, and that inevitably happens at most elementary schools, and really most schools in the county, once we come back from the holiday break, where it's, okay, it's go time, we have this assessment, we need this grade because we want to be an A, uh, get a bonus off of this, or the school gets an A, or the, you know, the district wants to have this big banner, we're A-rated. But I say, hey, everybody, what about the fact that so many pockets in District Seven and other areas of the county, year after year after year, kids' performances, language? So, yeah, we're A-rated district overall, but you have these pockets where that's far from A, that's a D. I would, a dog would say F-rated. So we're trying to break that cycle and create a new paradigm shift. We are pretty confident that within three years, we're gonna have proof of concept such that we'll be able to use it in other areas of the county that have, that have traditionally lingered, like Delray, certain areas of Pointe, for example, uh, Green Acres as well. So we think this has great prospects for success, and happy to say that it's gonna benefit the residents of Mangonia Park as well, um, as far as that goes. Um, and with that, oh, JFK, I'm sorry, Mister Clark is doing excellent, excellent job at JFK. If you all have had a chance to go there, I would encourage you to go. But if you have not had a chance to go there, you should go. So like, for example, unlike, uh, West Riviera, I'm starting to see ascension across all metrics at JFK. He's running a really tight ship, ship over there. You wouldn't know it from the outside, but when you come in there, a lot of respect for students, of teachers, he's doing a good job. He has a very calming personality, and you know, remember how middle school, I think we all remember how middle school can be, that's a pretty awkward time. So to have somebody that can help you kind of right the ship, he's a huge benefit to the school district. I'm so happy that he's been there, and he's doing an amazing job. And also Palm Beach Lakes is doing an amazing thing with the esports program. Uh, we have proof of concept there. Now we got our first scholarship athlete from the Palm Beach Lakes Esports Program. They are kicking butt and taking names up there. Uh, Ms. McCray, she's the current principal there. She's been there now two, this will be her third year, I guess. Great culture, great culture. Most, most children to a person really love and respect her, and she's doing a great job to really improve on everything the prior, uh, principal did there. We'd like to see that when you have new leadership in place. So things overall are moving in the right direction inside of District Seven, and thank you all for allowing me to come here today. I know you have probably much more important things than just to listen to me, kind of, glubiate or whatever, but I just think it's important to, we're in this together. You're doing your role, I'm doing mine, and for me to be effective in what I do, I need to speak to you all, because collectively, y'all know more than I'll ever know. So thank y'all for taking time to let me speak to you today. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it, but just, we're gonna, to councilmembers in just a moment. I did say I'm up for riff and vision, so I'll call as I saw it. Um, Councilwoman Webb, uh, Council, Vice Mayor, then Councilwoman Davis.
I want to thank you very much for coming out. It's always a pleasure when it comes to education. It just does something to me. I want to acknowledge the fact that one of the things I love about you is that you're out there in the community. I see where you advocate, and you don't just advocate for the big, you are out there in early, like you're literally all over. So when you do get re-elected next year, I am happy to see what else you're going to come with. You touch a few points, and it's like right down my alley. So where it comes to VPK and being kindergarten ready, it starts in that whole threshold, and as is, the three-year-olds are being taken from centers, or the opportunities being given to them to go to elementary. So they're being taken from centers, and to me, when they grab them from the centers, it's more like a relapse, because like you're saying, some of them, they're not potty trained, and they're putting them in at three, four, and five-year-olds, so they're mixing them up. Some of these kids are way too mature for the three-year-olds, while some three-year-olds are pretty advanced. Is there a way we, are, are there a system that can be created for, to see if and how, and I, I experienced it, that's why I'm saying it, where you're, you, you have a three-year-old in a classroom with a four or five, because they want to fill those classes, and that child end up falling backwards or having to. and that child end up falling backwards or having to leave the school district and go back out into a center. And then also with kids with disability, I don't know if you're familiar, how, well, I would love for you to explain to me more the Even Be Hard Well Act. Because it limits the disabilities in there when disability is very broad. It could be social, emotional, A D H D, all the As and the Ds that are, but it's very limited on here. It has about four or five of them, but it's not broad. And to me, it shouldn't stop there. And then not only that, they're giving them one or two trainings. I'm in early childhood education and I have to do at least six or seven trainings for the year, not to mention the ones that I do because I specialize in kids with early.
Who is them? Who is getting one or two trainings?
So on the, the Even Be Hard Swell Act, that's only two trainings for the year, one training for the year.
This is a federal law? I'm not versed in that particular law.
So it, the law was passed, I don't remember the exact date, but it was supposed to go into effect October of this year.
And it requires that persons who are dealing with special needs children?
Schools to do a training on disability. But my thing is they're only doing one training. And one training I don't think is good enough, especially when you're dealing with kids with autism, autistics and, you know, and it goes up. Social, emotional and the others I can understand, but the other ones, they just go all the way up. And then what I noticed too, they're not, this is middle school now. They took out life skills out of middle school and high school. So now we're having kids that are either book smart and not street smart. And there's a way that they can pull back life skills in schools? Or is there something you can work on when?
Probably, probably having like different organizations. Like, like I was touching on earlier, things are much more rigorous than definitely when I was in school. I'm not sure when you all graduated, but we didn't have all these standardized tests and preliminary test one, preliminary test two, real test three. Like take, take the same test three times and it really does affect the overall day. So they don't have as many hours for, for home ec and things of that nature. But I'm wondering if we had different, maybe have a home ec society, say Palm Beach Lakes or School X or whatever the case may be. That might be a workaround.
What about electives?
That's what I'm saying. We have electives, but we don't probably, we don't have as many as even when I was in school. We don't have shop class and things like that at most schools anymore. And that's largely due to the fact that the state is kind of mandated that certain things be assessed. So you only have so many hours in the day unless you expand that workday, which you, most people haven't really been amenable to. So it's kind of a challenge. So that's why I come and speak to you all, because collectively we can work this out as far as that goes. Whether it's an aftercare program at maybe a civic center here in town, or you all, or having someone who's in line with you going to the SAC meetings at West Riviera, J F K and Palm Beach Lakes advocating for these type of things to bring those things through to fruition. Because at the SAC meetings, for example, statutorily, they have to kind of go with the will of the majority at the meeting. Unfortunately, too often it's pretty much the principal and A P, maybe one parent, have Ms. Quince, and that's about it. That sound like two to three almost every time. So you can tell it's not gonna be a whole lot of community engagement there. But if we flood those SAC meetings, for example, all you have to do is live in the city to be a member of the SAC or be a business owner. You don't have to have a kid. So I would also encourage people to stop thinking of it so linearly in terms of if I don't have a kid, then I don't have a safe. One, you pay taxes. And then two, if these children aren't properly prepared, they might be looking at the size of your house or something like that, or whatever the case may be. Or we're paying for it in many other ways. So they are children, even if we didn't have any hand in them coming into this world. They are a responsibility. They're citizens just like us. And even if they're not, they're still here. We gotta make sure that they can be productive every day that they're in Palm Beach County. So that's my best answer. But I will say on that, that statute, you can send that question to me or any question that you all ever have, and that's for anybody here in the chamber. Any question of the district, you should always send your questions to board.office@palmbeachschools.org. So board.office@palmbeachschools, with an S, dot O R G. Because what happens is those questions always get sent to the subject matter expert. Like Mr. McCormick, he's the head of our E S E program. He probably, I can't imagine, he doesn't know exactly what you're talking about. I don't. Just because I'm a lawyer, I definitely don't know all laws. And I don't even try to play it like that. I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night either, so I can't even fake it. But I found that they generally are very responsive. And then if it's a situation, particularly if it's a District Seven or just across the district, you feel like, hey, I just need some follow-through, just C C me on it. And I already understand what that means if I've been C C'd on it. Somebody wants me to kind of follow up and make sure that the job is getting done in a timely fashion. So that's my ask of you. And I hope you all, you know, do that.
I don't wanna get too carried away. Let me turn it over to the floor.
Yes, board, B O A R D dot office, O F F I C E, at Palm Beach Schools, with an S, dot O R G. Yes, sir.
Buddy, anything else, Vice Mayor?
Thank you for the title, but no, I don't turn, I don't wanna get too carried away with education, so go ahead.
Also, Vice Mayor?
I was intrigued when you were saying that there's gonna be, and did I get it right? That the West Riviera site is going to be predominantly pre-K through third grade?
Not predominantly, it's gonna be exclusively.
Exclusively?
Pre-K and gone through second grade.
I know the, the building itself is quadrupled in size. So does that mean you're gonna have that many more, that age grade, A grade, A and grade?
So instead of being a K through five, it'll be, it'll be Bethune and West Riviera's pre-K. Bethune and West Riviera's, oh, I'm sorry, Bethune, West Riviera and Lincoln's pre-K kindergarten, first and second grade. They're all gonna be kind of condensed there. And so by taking the high stakes testing provision out, no one's getting interrupted. So Teacher Quince has helped me master the alphabet. And now she's just about ready to start working on sight words or whatever the case may be. But sometimes we gotta pull her out of the class to cover for somebody who might be doing something in third grade. You won't have that now. You'll have that continuity of education. And we believe that's gonna pay benefits over time in terms of limiting what we call the summer slot. Because of some other tools that I haven't, didn't really speak about this year, maybe I need to come back in the spring, that the parents and concerned citizens need to do to help make sure that Johnny and Jane are not forgetting some of the stuff they learned in school during that, you know, ten-week summer period. Because a lot of our children, in certain areas of the county, they, they have that annual summer slot such that there's always almost like a little bit of remediation. And remediation is time lost. There's really no need for that. If we work together as a community, it's not just the school board's responsibility to take care of our children. They do have the lion's share of the obligation. We pay for that. But we gotta have some sand, have some sweat in the game too. So that's kind of calling all, calling all hands. It's kind of my mindset in that. But yes, West Riviera will be starting next year, pre-K through second grade only.
Anything else, Vice Mayor?
Another question, but that, I think that pretty much covers it now.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Quince Davis?
I would just like to thank you for coming. Thank you for your hard work and education as you are really pressing. To have a high school in Riviera Beach is amazing. Thank you. I wish you had it when I was there. And nobody thought like you. And it's just amazing that you are bringing this forward. And, oh God, the people that are going on, if they could just be able to see it. Because I could just imagine just that high school alone with all the athletes that go everywhere. They all be at one school. That's gonna be great. And I hope that we put metal detectors at every school. We are much needed, the whirlwind now. So I, I, and I wanna mention that 45th Street, we talked about that, bus safety. The sheriff got right on it. So I think everything is in line right now. And I appreciate you guys. I think Matt, Mr. Matt Kev needed that gentleman's name. Just in case we go through this next year, we go through it every year.
Yes.
So we just wanna kind of cut that bus safety situation out. So once he gets the gentleman name, he gave me a name.
Joe Sanchez is the point of contact. He's in charge of buses and things of that nature. And everybody in the district's email address is their first name dot last name at palmbeachschools.org. So Joseph Sanchez with an S, not a Z, at palmbeachschools.org. Joseph dot Sanchez, S A N C H E S, at palmbeachschools, with an S, dot O R G.
Okay, thank you.
He's the head, chief operating officer.
Okay, because every year, every year, we have the same problem. So we won't have that problem next year. We'll get ahead of it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Buddy, okay, two quick one.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I just wanna add to that. Your staff was very good to get on top of that. But that situation that we saw that one day was just amazing. Kids going through traffic from one side of 45th to the other. And I've never seen anything like it. But your staff on the north end?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes, Ms. Napier, yes.
They were very thoughtful on that. And they did help it. So just wanted to put that out.
Also, I appreciate it. I have two very quick questions. One is that, of course, the new school, and of course, it's a done deal. Suncoast, of course, I'm understanding probably would fall under the category of a school of choice?
It is.
Okay.
Almost a hundred percent. Less than fifteen percent of the students in Suncoast live in Riviera Beach. So the reason why I was so aggressive, shall we say, in pushing for the Riviera Beach High School was because I showed how most cities with a student population the size of Riviera Beach, which by the way, even though the city itself is fairly small, it has a very large high school age population. The greater majority of cities, i.e. Palm Beach Gardens, Wellington, Boca, Jupiter, eighty to ninety percent of those students go to school in their city. So it seemed like a natural thing that a child should and would want to go to school in his or her hometown. So that's what's in push for it.
So the new school would be, like of, like of the right definition, would be a zone school?
Primarily. But this is still up for, this is why, when we have these charrettes, we wanna know what type of programming the citizens want. But there may be some seats that are available for choice programs as well. Like the marine thing, I think is gonna be a windfall. Parents are gonna realize, wow, my little Johnny, my little Jane can come out as an eighteen, nineteen-year-old and be hitting the ground running with an actual skill set. Because you have billionaires and high millionaires with boats. There's no sticker price that you can show them that they're gonna blush at. Well, you should take advantage of that. So there, I, I foresee, Mayor, there being some seats available for non-residents in Riviera Beach. Because I'm gonna sell it real hard to where the people, I'm pretty confident are gonna say, yeah. My son may wanna go to NFL, but in the meantime, he's gonna know how to do this or that in regards to the marine industry. So, yeah. But we're not gonna forget about Mangonia Park. That's what, I think that's where you're going. I'm, I think about you all kind of part and parcel with Riviera Beach. So I got you in mind.
All righty. And the last comment, observation, are we, are we, I'm looking at the, what we now call the technical schools.
Yes.
And I'm gonna age myself because I went to South Tech and Born a Region of Boynton with the South Tech, and it was a full-fledged technical school, A C repair, cosmetology and so forth.
Yes.
We haven't gotten back there yet.
No, we're getting there. So because I tailor this for us on the north end, my district runs all the way down into Delray. So we have, it's not South Tech, but the old Carver High School is basically what you're mentioning now. We have low voltage electric, electrical work certifications there and other things as well. Roosevelt, we're renovating that. We're gonna have an African-American research museum and library there. We're also gonna have some of those very same programming that you just mentioned, Mayor, and the West Palm Beach School, the school site as well, in addition to whatever is already in North Tech. So it's coming back, coming back strong.
Oh, good. Because as you stated earlier, and I agree, not everyone has the aptitude or the attitude to go to college. A lot of people just wanna, I wanna learn something real quick, get out there in the workforce. And we did a disservice when we got rid of tech schools some years back.
Yeah, we're trying to recoup, address that issue as best we can and as quickly a time as possible.
Okay, good, good. This is that we're trying to rebuild it.
Yes, sir.
So it's better to keep it and fix it than to tear it down and try and rebuild it.
Which is why I'm encouraging you all not to use vouchers to take your child to a charter school or a private school. If there's something going on at the school of question, let's work to fix that versus eroding the economies of scale. Because the buying power is substantially less at a private school or charter school as compared to these constitutionally mandated public schools. So let's not give up on the ship. Let's change out the engine or whatever the case may be, but let's not scrap.
Absolutely. I've always been an advocate, and I've said wherever I've been, as loud as I could, why do we have A, I mean, I B programs at this school? And why do we have, give the programs, every school should be, right? Give an opportunity. Because oftentimes you find kids who are unidentified, who have not been identified as being appropriate for those type of programs. And so they just kind of fall through the wayside and become a little despondent because nobody recognized that, their abilities and their aptitude, and they've just become other things. So.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So I think every school should be.
I'll definitely keep you all in the loop when we have the choice director, Dr. Johnson in. Because she's the subject matter expert on that. And that's something she's actually trying to change the paradigm as well. So you don't have these silos where you have an I B program that's say thirty miles away from your neighborhood. That may not be feasible. So we want to be more uniform in terms of choice programs made available within, within a drivable region, five to ten mile radiuses, for example. So, yeah, these are changes that we're working on right now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. All righty, anything else from the desk? If not, McConnell?
Just, just one. The mayor, the mayor mostly covered it. Back in, back in the day when it was called Vo-Tech.
Yes.
They did everything. They worked on the cars, they welded, carburetor work, plumbing, everything. Is that where the county's moving or?
County's there. You have an issue of space. Like, for example, the Riviera Beach High School is gonna have a small footprint. So there are certain, certain choice programs that aren't feasible there, that say aren't feasible out in, say, the rural Palm Beach area, where we have like a whole home building program where the young, generally men, but young ladies too, are able to come out of, out of high school with the ability to construct a house, for example. I believe we have plumbing, but I'm not sure where in the district we have it. We have a hundred and eighty-seven schools, and I forget the total number of high schools, the thirties, I believe. So I'm pretty confident there's at least one or two at minimum high schools across the county that have plumbing, for example. But low voltage electrical work, we're trying to start to segue that into the high school. HVAC, like I said, construction, we already have those things. So we're trying to get some of that back. We, to the mayor's point, kind of gave it to Palm Beach State. And so they're, they're, so it's a cash cow for them. So they're not quick to kind of give it back. So we're trying to, you know, get it back, a little bit of it back, but then come up with some things that we hadn't already seeded to them. But you're right, Councilman McConnell, that's definitely something we need, for sure.
It's like the mayor said, you know, everybody, everybody's not tuned to go to college.
Correct.
And I made a good living in the construction.
Right.
I belong to the Iron Works of Louisiana.
Correct, yeah.
And I made a good living, I raised my family. They, you know, they took it all away.
Yeah.
The county shut all of it down.
So we're trying to get it back, trying to get it back.
Not the state. Okay, so we'll take Vice Mayor, and I think we've had sort of a discussion here.
All right. Once again, it's, it's a joy to be able to hear directly from you what's happening in our education system. I'm thinking about the emergence of A I. And is this considered a technical area in the school system? Or is this gonna be part of the total learning compensation? Because I've seen so many businesses just blossoming out of the emergence of A I. And teenagers who don't even have half of the educational background as our high school students do are making big money because of their A I education and involvement in business. So how is that positioned within the school?
So I know that the district definitely uses A I as a teaching tool. In terms of like certifications and things of that nature, Vice Mayor, I'm not quite sure. And I think the quickest way for, I guess, both of us to get that answer is if you send an email to that board.office@palmbeachschools.org. Because whoever the subject matter expert or experts are, they can answer that. Hopefully to satisfactory level for you, and if not, just follow up. Because I'm not really sure about that. That's not something admittedly that I've been like on the front lines, like figure out, okay, where are we taking this A I in the next five to ten to fifteen years? I hear some who are, but that hasn't been something that's been top of mind for me. But I can tell you, though, that we do use A I at all levels, K through twelve. But I'm not sure as far as, as a profession, how do, I'm not sure where we are with that just yet. So you'll help me learn some things if you send that question in.
All righty. I'm sure there are just a litany of more questions and comments we could add. So, um, what's the first, um, excuse me, Attorney Ferguson? Just for the record, for those who may not know, the school board meetings, times are?
Sure. Generally on the first and third, Wednesday of each month. We have a special meeting on the first Wednesday normally. This week, we're having it tomorrow, which is the second Wednesday. And the general body meeting is almost always on the third Wednesday. It starts at a time certain at five o'clock. The special meeting that's tomorrow, it, I can't tell you what time it starts because it doesn't have a specific time. It'll probably get rolling sometime around four fifteen, four thirty, four forty-five, I suspect.
Okay. And then the regular meeting thereafter or?
The regular meeting will be the following Wednesdays. So the regular meeting is almost always on the third Wednesday. And it always starts at five P M. It has to. The special meeting starts whenever we're done with closed session workshops and what have you. And that's generally, in my experience, in these almost three years now, four fifteen, four thirty, four forty-five. Sometimes five o'clock if we get long-winded and closed session. But normally, four fifteen, four thirty, four forty-five.
All righty. And that's, of course, always at the building, formerly known as Taj Mahal.
Thirty-three hundred Forest Hill Boulevard in West Palm Beach. Zip code is three three four zero six. Yes, sir.
All righty. Again, we, thank you so much for coming and spending time with us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much and thank you for all that you're doing out there, trying to get things done within all of our communities.
Yes. Thank you again for having y'all. You have a great night.
Okay, thanks again. We appreciate it. All righty. Definitely a good presentation and a lot of information. We're thanking for that. If you follow along, our next item is item five, Palm Beach County League of Cities. We're gonna go to Attorney Amity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick calendar reminder for you. The next league meeting is on October twenty-second. This month, it's gonna be out at West. This month, it's going to be out at Westlake, at the Westlake Adventure Park. That's fifty-four ninety King Fisher Boulevard down in Westlake. The presenter is Stephanie Goldfuss. She will be presenting on strategic communication in crisis, staying in your lane for successful outcomes. She's from a law firm, so I think that's a new presentation. I've not ever seen her, I don't think on an agenda, but again, that's October twenty-second, and the normal start time, eleven-thirty for lunch.
Thank you so much. Any questions for our attorney concerned as a relation to League of Cities? Okay, hearing none. Following on our agenda, our next item is item seven A, and this is consideration for the approval of preliminary site plan application number SR two oh two four dash zero two, Bulldog Construction LLC, representing Scientific Instruments on behalf of property owners Hoy, Joan O'Brien, TR. If the applicants are present, we're going to ask if you'd just come forward.
And Mr. Mayor, while they're coming forward, just to give council a little bit of background, you may recall about a year ago, they came before us and gave a self-presentation, and I think council was very pleased with that. And they've had some work to do as far as their preliminary site plans, but they're now ready for that. Staff recommends approval if you see fit, and at the end, the attorney will have some items to read into the record as well. You do have a copy of the staff report, which was produced by our planning team. So, pretty good description in here, but I'll let them explain it first.
Just before they do, Amiti?
Yeah, thank you. This is a quasi judicial item, so could you first state your names for the council?
Matthew Gray.
And your name, sir?
Brett Moore.
Thank you. Could you raise your right hands for me, else where are you in? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, and I'll turn back to the council for any ex parte disclosures on this item.
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. And thanks so much for coming before us, and so what we're going to do at this point in time, we do have information before us. We're going to reserve our questions, we allow you to do your presentation, and then we'll probably have some questions here and on the floor as well. So, at this time, the floor is yours.
Good evening to all of you. Thank you for this opportunity. We were in front of you before, and many of you probably remember. I am tonight also representing Austin Capers. He was not allowed to be here, or not, could not be here, excuse me. So, I just.
I was going to say.
Not allowed, right? Yeah, couldn't be here, so I'm going to kind of represent. Right. So, I have something that I'm just going to read really quick to kind of bring in the scientific instruments part of it. Scientific Instruments was founded in November nineteen sixty-seven by aeronautical engineer Jack Hoy and physicist Gilbert Halverson. Their aerospace and academic backgrounds helped them develop the first commercially available cryogenic germanium resistance thermometer that supplied the Apollo lunar program. Today, Scientific Instruments is owned and operated by their founder's grandson, Austin Capers. Under his leadership, their revolutionary devices make them the industry leader in their specialized fields and are used in laboratories, hospitals, in space, and many other thriving industries. The current building at forty-four hundred West Tiffany Drive is twelve thousand one hundred and two square foot. My proposed addition is five thousand seven hundred and fifty-three square foot. The combined size would be seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty-five square feet. The intention of this addition is to supply new office space for management that will also free up much-needed space for research, development, and manufacturing. Scientific Instruments is growing, and Bulldog Contracting, along with Brett Moore and Mangonia Building Department, I feel that we are all here to facilitate their growing needs. We applied and were granted a variance, giving us much-needed space to facilitate parking in the south side or the back of the property, and now this is our next step as we stand in front of you. Essentially, we are building a rectangle off of a rectangle, but that doesn't really speak to what the importance of what Scientific Instruments and all of that staff do. We at Bulldog, we build all kinds of different things, none more important than this. With their growing need to scale up everything that they're doing, it becomes very relevant to give them the space, and I view this as a phase with another phase that comes behind this because of the importance. So, they, with their, you know, and again, we take into consideration that I am not Austin, so I am just trying to kind of give the little summary of what they do, but you hear me talk about space. As important is the MRI machines and the different components that they have that facilitate that. That's kind of where I leave this, you know, I follow, it's a very, very hard act to follow with the presentation that we just had. That was fantastic, and, you know, I would like to have, you know, a whole lot more information to get into this, but at the end of the day, this is just very important to ourselves and to my client to get this going, so we can give them the space that they need. I look forward to questions, and I'm also going to hand the mic over to Brett here, and we open the floor to any questions that you have. I trust that all of you have those packets in front of you. Very good.
Mr. Mayor, and again, just for council's benefit, in the staff report, there's really good illustrations in there.
Before we proceed, I'd like to correct the record in the agenda. It reflects this twenty twenty-four dash zero three, when technically it's twenty twenty-four dash zero two. That's what Amiti calls a scripter's error, but it's really my mistake. And then the other one is the address is listed as four four five zero. It's not, it's four four zero zero.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that we corrected the record before we proceed. My apologies.
Yes, always. Okay. So noted, I saw noted for the record.
Yeah, and I think Matt did a great job giving you the overall introduction to, you know, what they're doing there, and basically my role, I'm going to be the professional record overseeing the construction, so if there's anything with the nuts and bolts, I can give you the answers there. I think like Matt pointed out, it's not necessarily a Mona Lisa architecturally, we're just stretching what's there and trying to, you know, minimize the impact to the neighboring properties. So, much of what you see, you're just going to get more of that, same colors, same look. So, not, not much drastic change for the neighborhood aesthetically. More about function than form.
So, any questions or?
Yeah, if there's any questions, I know we gave you guys a presentation before, but if there's anything additionally there with what we're going to be doing, we're here to answer those questions.
Thanks, I certainly appreciate it. So, we'll see if there's any questions from the, on the DAS, any comments of council? Any comments or questions? Just as council is gathering their questions together, there was something you had stated earlier, you used the word phase, so I just want to make sure that this is not being built in phases.
No, no, no. It's more their, their changing needs that I was referencing.
Okay.
In that, yeah, it's, it's something that, so, we have been after this for quite some time, and during that time, we had the ability to spend more time at the facility and around, you know, their staff, and at the end of the day, I can't really voice or express the importance and the specialized skill that they all have over there. And, you know, I'm very happy, and Bulldog Contracting is very happy to be attempting to facilitate that. This is something to where I think that all of us as humans really gain something by addressing their needs and allowing them to scale up to do this. To answer your question, kind of long-winded, no, not phased.
Alright, so the context was just a process.
Exactly, the process, yes, sir.
Alrighty, now, on the last page of the, page five that we have in terms of the information that came from staff, it has some elevations. Now, if you take a look at your building now, it has a nice facade to it. What you have now, and this is, this is probably preliminary, excuse me, preliminary. Now, is it going to have the very same type of a facade to it, or?
Yeah, we're good, a lot of the paint schemes, a lot of what you see there, architecturally, we're just going to mimic with the addition. There's going to be probably some more decorative features, like a portal entry over the entryways, so a little bit of dressing it up, but nothing architecturally is going to change with the facade, nothing.
Okay.
As far as heights or anything drastic.
So, what we have, it basically is just kind of give sort of a visual in terms of perspective and how things are going to be laid out, the footprint and all of that, but.
Yep, yeah, it's kind of a massing.
Because we don't want to go backwards. It looks good over there right now, so we want to make sure it stays that way and even get better.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we only hope to enhance it over there.
Okay, agreed. Alrighty, there was one other. And you did receive all of the comments and everything from staff, as well as our engineers and such?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think the printout summarizes.
Okay.
From what we understand, yeah.
Yeah, what we understand today.
Okay, and you agree to all of the conditions that were given to you?
I agree to all the conditions that we read absolutely, and is prepared to address them as fast as possible to continue moving this along.
Okay, great, so noted for the record. Any other questions or comments before we go to our attorney? If not, Amiti?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's what I wanted to flag for the council. On page six of the staff report that the town's planner prepared, there are three recommended conditions of approval. I'll go ahead and read those into the record for you. The second one is a little bit substantive, that's why I wanted to make sure that these are called out, and they were discussed to the applicant just prior to the meeting tonight. But just so the record is clear, the staff is requesting the following conditions of approval. One, the applicant shall submit a revised site and civil plans, excuse me, that is a typo there, the applicant shall submit revised site and civil plans indicating twenty feet by nine feet parking spaces as required by town code. As the council knows, your code allows you to approve parking space dimensions that deviate. That's what they're proposing, so your approval tonight would include that. They just need to revise the plans to reflect the size that you approved, should this be approved tonight. Two is the applicant shall revise the site and civil plans to provide a minimum of twenty-foot wide drive aisles for ninety-degree parking spaces. The plan that is before the council tonight shows a drive aisle width of twenty feet. The code requires twenty-five feet for ninety-degree parking spaces, so the site plan and the civil plans that are before you are technically not code compliant. That's why the condition is being recommended. And then the third, and I think this is the most minimal, the applicant shall provide the POA approval letter for the Central Park Lot Owners Association. I believe they have that, we just didn't get a copy of it in time, so we just want to make sure they provide that to the town. But those are the three conditions that are being recommended by staff. So, at the point in which the council makes any motions, if you could have your motion include, should you approve the application with those three conditions, that would be appreciated.
Thank you so much. Alrighty, any other questions or comments from the DAS? Okay, any staff comments, additional staff?
Just one quick comment, Mr. Mayor. So, on the POA approval, the letter's not here, but I can verify they did get POA approval from the PCC zoning.
Thanks so much. Just as I'm writing here, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. So, at this time, we entertain a motion as it relates to item seven A, that being the consideration of a further approval, the preliminary site plan application number SR two oh two four.
Mr. Mayor, before our motion is made, do you want to solicit public comment, because this is a quasi judicial item?
Yeah, my apologies, yes. At this time, we're open to the floor to any public comment, if there's any comment from the public. And for those who are actually here in the chambers, we also have a online on our YouTube page, we allow just like a thirty-second delay for that, if there are someone there that may have a question, but the floor is now open for any public comment.
One viewer. I'm waiting the thirty-second delay.
Okay, seeing that there's no public comment from online, as well as here on the floor, we'll close the floor to public comment. We're now back at the DAS. If there is any questions or comments, now is the time, if there is any additional comments or questions from council?
This appears that this is one of our longest-standing businesses in Mangonia Park that has continued to work with us and is interested in expanding, bringing more employees into your facility.
Yes, ma'am.
These will all be highly trained individuals. I take it they have specific skills, are you familiar enough with that?
Correct, yes. And so, they in twenty twenty-four, they added to their staff twenty-two people. In twenty twenty-five, up until this point, there was eleven new hires, all in specialized skill, all throughout the needs of the different areas that they work in. Yes, ma'am.
And then I guess the parking requirements is what we're referring to here?
Yes, ma'am.
They all have been considered and being agreed upon?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment. I'm still trying to figure out how to mix soap and vinegar so it could become a volcano, and I can't get there, so do you have training for dummies? No, but I love what you've brought to us so far, and I echo the same sentiments as Sarita, and I visited the site myself, and I'm pretty much pleased with what I see, and thank you guys for what you've been doing.
Wonderful, thank you. Alrighty, seeing that there's no other comments or questions, the floor is now open for a motion. Is there a motion as it relates to item seven A? Motion has been made, that is to include also the conditions of approval.
Teaching me how to mix a volcano?
Conditions of approval is?
Yeah, the conditions, oh, hold on, yeah, with the conditions, sorry.
Okay, and for the record, without having those read, into the record again, the applicant is familiar, has received those conditions of approval, as also stated to the record by our attorney?
Yes, sir.
And you agree to those conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so noted. Motion has been made, is there a second to that?
I second.
Has been properly moved and seconded? Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dave Buchanan Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis Quince?
Yes.
Councilmember McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor O'Neal?
Yes.
Pass this in.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much, you'll have a great night.
Absolutely. You do the same. Our next item is item seven B, and this is a request for the pool of an emergency sewer lateral repair located at one 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 five Fifty-third Court. Okay?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Believe everyone got their briefing, but this is the repair we were talking about on Fifty-third Court South. There, as we talked about, as we amended the agenda, we have, we have now three quotes for this repair, and staff would recommend the quote that we just received in. They were late getting to the site to evaluate it, so we just, we got a late quote, and that would be for the Hinterland Group for thirty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. Little bit more on this is that the lateral repair, usually a lateral is on the other side, this lateral happens to be tied into our main, so it is ours. Melvin is not here tonight, but he is urging me to get this in front of you and approved as soon as possible, so we can start the work. It borders, it's on town right of way, but it does border a very active businesses parking lot, and that property owner is very afraid at this point, with all the rain that we're having, you know, there's already a sinkhole there that he's going to receive damage to his parking lot. The other thing about the Hinterland quote, they can start within a matter of days. I believe that DS Ekins, they could also start in a matter of days, but industry standard, they indicated it would take them a couple of weeks to get on site, so again, the recommendation would be for the Hinterland Group for the amount listed, and that they could begin early next week. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, any questions or comments? As it relates to the proposed repair estimates? Okay, if not?
Seems like we've had Hinterland Group doing quite a bit of work in Mangonia Park, so we're familiar. I said, Hinterland Group has done quite a bit of work in Mangonia Park, so we're familiar with their quality of work.
Absolutely.
And they're confident they'll be able to start rather soon, which is necessary. That's a good thing.
Yes, ma'am, that was something we pushed, this has to be started very soon.
Other council comments or questions? Now, relative to the scope of service, we don't have the oven in front of me, but as it relates to the scope of service, they're all doing basically the same thing?
They're all very, very similar.
Yes, yes, sir. All righty, and this has been vetted by staff? And it is a staff recommendation that we go with the Hinterland Group? Yes, sir. Okay. All righty, so with that, if there are no other questions or comments? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, so move that we approve of the emergency sewer lateral repairs being done by the Hinterland Group as has been quoted.
Okay, that's a thirty?
Thirty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Thank you so much, a motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Has been properly moved and seconded, or are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Buchanan Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis Quince?
Yes.
Councilmember McConnell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The passes and ends.
Thank you so much. Those are the only action items before, for tonight's meeting. At this time, we'll open the floor now to any public comment. The floor is now open to any public comment that we may have. Seeing that there's no public comment, we'll close the floor to public comment. And we're gonna go to our reports again, if we have something.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna impose on your grace, if I may, for a little bit of leeway on this. So tonight, I think we talked about in our one-on-ones, we do have Mr. Taylor here to talk about our impact fee study. We did not post an agenda, so if it's okay with council, what we would like to do, I'd like for Midi and the captain to go ahead and give their reports, have council comments, and then have Mr. Taylor go in, under the administration report, if that's okay. That'll save us from doing the workshop, which we did not post, but he's here and he's got critical information to go over. No action, just, he may ask for a consensus along the way, but no action.
Okay, all righty. Okay, so with that, then we'll proceed. Captain?
No.
Okay, any questions for PBSO? Okay, if not, Amit?
No, no report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All righty, so we'll come back now to our manager, who's deferred his time.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Again, in your manager's report, you probably saw an updated calendar of events, that we want to talk about, a lot of things coming up, especially in December. December sixth is the, I'm going off memory, I may get something wrong here, is the Fourth Annual Gala here at Town Hall. I mean, December eighth is the annual mayor's luncheon at twelve-thirty.
December the third is the gala? December three?
Which was?
The annual Christmas gala?
Gala, September, I'm sorry, I want to stay in September.
December?
December third is the gala.
At six P M., that's where the six comes in.
That's the, the start, that's right. We get up into December the twenty-first, which is the Sunday before Christmas, is the annual toy giveaway here at Town Hall. And the twenty-third, we're gonna bring back the Christmas caravan, going through all the neighborhoods in Mangonia Park. So, if there's any questions about that, I'll be happy to answer them, or on any other topic, but if not, I'm gonna throw it to Mr. Taylor to give his very brief presentation and.
Just one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
The mention of the groundbreaking ceremony on Friday, October twenty-fourth.
Very good, I think you just did. So, October twenty-fourth, which is a Friday at eleven A M., water view, groundbreaking ceremony. I can't emphasize to council enough, I know everything didn't go exactly like we were planning, but town council made this project happen. And so I think town council should all be there, running a victory lap, and taking full credit for this project, because you've made this happen. So, that's my report, except for Mr. Taylor.
All righty, so at this time, we'll have Mr. Taylor come forward.
Sorry adding out papers, I bought copies, that wasn't you, you guys?
We have copies.
We just.
Made copies.
Good evening again, council, thank you for having me here today.
Good evening.
I, since the last time we spoke, I kinda wanted to just get some feedback on the last time I was here, and I wasn't able to get that, so I thought it'd be easier if I came, and maybe we can just have a brief, open discussion about some of the things that were in the last presentation, and also some of the things that have changed since that time. So, I won't take the time to go through that entire presentation again, because that would take a while, unless you guys have specific comments or questions about the things that I had presented before. What I would like to bring before you today, excuse me, are one of the major things that changed from the last time I gave you guys the options between the fifty and a hundred percent, considering the time that you guys have last updated your impact fees in two thousand and nine. And I would also have a couple of suggestions that I just want some feedback from the board at the end of the presentation, if that's okay? Okay, so, excuse me. I'm not sick, I promise I have allergies.
It's okay.
So, I'm going to skip at the bottom of this presentation, is there anyone who needs a recap on what was spoken about the last time I was before you?
Yeah, you can give us a brief one.
Just briefly, an analysis of view?
Okay, so, we all know what the impact fees are for. You guys have not updated your impact fees since two thousand and nine, technically, you have the right to do that every four years, and you should, also along with updating your capital improvement projects, so that we can back numbers into any shortfalls the town may have, on the things that are going to impact any new development, or shortfalls in facilities that are needed, or maintenance needed, to supply the same levels of service that already exist to new development. And this is specifically talking about the fifty-two acre site, which is the largest developable site in the city, or in the town, and how I came up with that calculation, or its set of calculations last time, to justify that. Excuse me. So, I will briefly, I'll just kinda skip ahead, so, reasons for the impact fee adjustment that we're recommending is because the impact fees haven't been adjusted since two thousand and nine, capital improvement costs have increased, even above what you guys have budgeted for. Capital improvement budget shortfalls are a direct result of that, and infrastructure improvements that are needed for the new development, that even if the fifty-two acre site, somebody came in with a billion dollars today, your infrastructure currently cannot handle that size development, okay? So, we are regulated by Florida statutes one sixty-three point three one eight zero one, and this outlines the criteria in which impact fees can be imposed, and how we go about trying to assess those impact fees, so that the, any new development is not basically getting double-tapped on paying all the infrastructure and improvement costs, and improvement costs related to impact fees. Do you need me to pause?
Uh, yes, just a, a quick pause, let the record reflect that Councilman Webb has stepped off the Diaz. No, go right ahead.
I'm sorry?
No, you can go right ahead.
Okay.
It was just some, some housekeeping.
Okay, understood. So I talked about the, the typical different ways that people calculate impact fees. In this case, because you guys have a very unique situation, I had to kinda merge all of them, and come up with something that is applicable to the town and that particular site. In my last presentation, you will notice that I had broken down the highest and best uses that could possibly go on that fifty-two acre site. Now, there can be some shifting, because obviously whoever buys it's gonna wanna build what they want, but based on the most current development trends, I picked the highest and best uses. So even if there's any shift in that, overall, your total project cost to develop, to develop that site is relatively gonna be the same. Excuse me. So, I'm sorry, move on, I talked about general methodology. Okay, so I analyzed the town's population with my data analytics guy, we talked about multiple use plan developments, trends in South Florida in general, specific to how that site can be developed, determine highest and best uses, analyze and develop impact potential on the various levels of service based on what's gonna be developed, or could be developed. Calculated the potential revenue of the current impact fees and the projected impact fees based on you guys' recommendation. And what did change, and this is what I kinda wanted to talk about, last time I spoke to you, there were four options, right? Because I wanted to give you a twelve-year look ahead. Even though right now, you can only, when you adopt your impact fees, you're adopting a scheduled impact fees that is only for a four-year period. But in order to accommodate for facilities and infrastructure that you need for that site and the town, I extrapolated it out, because based on my development experience, I wear multiple hats, I know that to build out a site at that, at that size, even if somebody had money today, you're looking at like eight years, okay? So you'll notice in my analysis breakdown, you'll see a highlighted portion, the chart will go out to twelve, but my highlighted portion is at eight, because that's when, even if the development was a start today as far as entitlements, changing your code to accommodate the new development, changing your con plan, by the time they can physically put shovel in the dirt and complete that, that chart is showing you the money that you would garner if the project was completed by that time. That is what gives you the numbers to know, okay, in order for us to accommodate facilities or infrastructure needs for a project by this date, this is how much money we would collect, that will let you know what your shortfall is for your future capital improvement projects. Everybody follow me so far? Okay? So, what did change is Senate Bill four eighty-two. The Florida statutes one sixty-three had a provision that you couldn't go above fifty percent unless you did something called a needs analysis, right? That was, that was an additional analysis, I told you, that needed to justify why you have to go above the fifty percent and below phasing schedule outlined in the Florida statutes. Well, CB four eighty-two, that was adopted in July, actually limited that now. So because the town of Mangonia Park has not instituted any, or adopted any new impact fees in, within a five-year period, the one percent, the one hundred percent option at this time is no longer an option. You can only go up to fifty percent at this time. But I adjusted the chart to show the fifty percent, because that was one of the options I gave you guys before, and I adjusted it to show that in year five, you could, you guys can be eligible for the hundred percent, subject to you guys providing that needs analysis, and that you guys have more than enough to justify that. Okay? So, I already talked about the increase in population the last time, that your total population, just on this site alone, will increase your total population in the town fifty percent or more. I broke down the uses and the assumptions of how I came to that based on size, acreage use. I did provide the population census data. What's important to me, the traffic impact analysis, the levels of service of potable water and wastewater did not change, but this bill, four eighty-two, it broke down, and it specifically says, even under extraordinary circumstances, that the local government has not increased the fees over, or over the preceding five years. This is what eliminates you from being able to do the hundred percent right now. So the highest we can go right now is up to fifty percent, not over, okay? That is for the next four years. Say, six months from the ending of year four, crossing over into year five, that would be the time you would do your needs analysis, and do another analysis for the traffic impact in general, to justify going to a hundred percent as soon as you cross over year five. The difference is, is that that time, you have to have two workshops with the board, and the board has to have a four, at least a four-member vote in, in support of. Okay? Yeah. On, I don't know what slide this is, but I showed the original phasing schedule of what I showed on the previous presentation, that shows the different options of how you guys could have adopted impact fees. I had to adjust that based on the Senate Bill four eighty-two, so you'll see the original chart, and then right behind that, you'll also see the new chart, that only shows the fifty percent max, and then a hundred percent after year five. So you can see the incremental increase, and the difference of what that made, and the total money that you can collect if that development is done by year four, eight, and twelve. Okay? And the same thing with the next chart, it's just a line graph that gives a little bit more clarification, it's the exact same thing, I gave the original, that I presented you first time, showing all four options that were available according to the Florida statutes. But when it was superseded by Senate Bill four eighty-two, I showed you the adjustment to the chart based on fifty percent right now, and one hundred percent in year five. What we did not talk about last time, which your own ordinance does provide some language on, is impact fee credits, and it's just something I want you guys to think about and discuss amongst yourselves. It doesn't necessarily be now unless you have questions. There are circumstances where you do need to offer a credit to someone for impact fees. So typically, let's say somebody comes in and has a single-family home that's destroyed by hurricane, right? Your current ordinance says, if you're, if you're putting that house back like-for-like, there is no impact fee, because there's no effect on the level of service for that. It's not affecting the roads, it's not affecting any more traffic. However, I would just like to have the board consider, it depends on when that house was built. If the house was built in nineteen fifty, impact fees weren't even instituted back then from a town in Mangonia Park, so therefore, they never paid into infrastructure improvements and things like that. So if the house is destroyed now, I think the town should have the right to impose some level of impact fee, because they never paid into it. Depending on the size of the house, I would also ask you to, I mean, the age of the house, I would also ask you to consider that if a house was, say, built in the nineteen seventies, what they paid in an impact fee at that time, relative to what the cost is now, yes, they paid into the impact, and they're not creating any more increased levels of service. However, you guys do have maintenance infrastructure requirements and needs. So, it is your option to consider offering an accredit of some impact fees, or reduced impact fee, but not necessarily a complete exemption. Right now, you guys, your, your code specifically says you guys exempt people from doing that, whether it's residential, whether it's commercial, or whether it's another type of facility. If you have, there's other language in here, also it talks about expansion of existing facilities. So if somebody has a warehouse, and this is just something I want the board to think about, if I have a warehouse here in the town of Mangonia Park, and I paid impact fees even fifteen years ago on the existing structure, business is doing great, I can double the size of my warehouse on this large lot that I have, your, your, your ordinance says that if you're expanding an existing use, because there's nothing new being created, that there's an exemption from impact fees. I would beg to differ, depending on the situation, you guys should have the flexibility of deciding whether it's an exemption or not, because if my warehouse, I'm allowed to double my employment, let's say another fifty, fifty patrons or fifty employees, well, that is effect on the water and sewer, that is effect on the roads, that does increase the levels of service. So I'm just asking you guys to think about that. One of the things I'm recommending is that you guys just consider maybe altering that language for situations like that. Excuse me. Yes, we talked about exemptions, we talked about credit. There's another recommendation here in section, excuse me, eleven point five dash twenty-seven, A one, two, and four exemptions for alterations and expansions. That's what I was talking about when it comes to the replacement, I think that should, there should be some flexibility in there, some credits or reductions allowed, but not necessarily exemptions. Especially because you guys are gonna have a large shortfall. And, where was the other one? Also altering section eleven point five dash seventy-two D, credit for private places of public assembly for use, says specifically, no credit against impact fees otherwise due will be provided for private provision of places of public assembly. Just asking you to consider for a second, if I'm the developer of that site, right? Developing this massive project, there's a bunch of impact fees that are gonna go to, you know, roads, transportation, public parks, things like that, right? If I provide you an amphitheater that's on my property, that it doesn't really generate me revenue, it's something that the city can use to have concerts, or whatever that, whatever it may be, and let's say it costs five, four million dollars, right? Well, right now, your code says that if I, as a developer, spend four million dollars for something that, even though it's on my private land, offers a public assembly service for concerts, or whatever the case may be, that I can't be exempt from impact fees relative to the cost that I just paid out. I would just ask you to consider either allowing yourselves to have the flexibility to negotiate that at the time, rather than having a, a black and white provision that says that it's just not allowed, because you may disincentivize somebody from spending the money necessarily to do something that is actually gonna benefit the public, simply because there's no provision in there to even negotiate what that fee could look like. Okay? I'd recommend also updating the capital improvement projects for new facilities and capital infrastructure by at least forty percent, because based on our sources, that's about average where construction prices have been raised since the pandemic. So the existing infrastructure items that you have, one, do need to be updated, but you also have to extrapolate what the construction prices will possibly be over the next four to five years, because what construction is today is not what it'll be four or five years from now to give you an accurate budget. Okay? Impact fee implementation, look ahead. Based on what you guys decide, or at least have a discussion on, you don't have to necessarily tell me today, but I would at least recommend that maybe in the next two weeks, you. But I would at least recommend that maybe in the next two weeks, you email Mr. Metcalf your considerations, whether individually or collectively. And upon that, I can finalize my technical report. I can provide suggested language for sections 11.5 in the town's impact fee ordinance, which would include a new impact fee schedule for the next four years. And I would like to pause that. I didn't think about this until I was on my way over here. Right now, that's already in your ordinance. I would, I guess, refer to the county, the city attorney or town attorney, but I would recommend not including that in your ordinance and just keeping it in your resolution once it's adopted. Because you're, unless you guys have a reason to change this every year and it's in the ordinance, people might not always go to the ordinance, but if it's in a resolution that you guys post on the web, you don't have, you don't have to do another code revision just to change impact fees four years from now. You can simply leave a note that you're, that whoever references that, that section in your code for impact fees has to reference whatever the current impact fees based on the town of Mangonia's website or however you guys want to reference it. So the code doesn't have to be updated every four years, it's just a resolution when you guys adopt a new impact fee schedule. The town attorney will review the revisions to the town ordinances, if that's what you guys want, based on the suggestions I have for credits and impact fee exemptions. And then the town meeting, the town council will schedule a meeting to adopt a new ordinance once the town attorney is ready for, for legal sufficiency. So I know I was talking pretty fast, but I wanted to get it out and just open it up so I don't keep you guys too long.
No, it's quite okay. No, thanks so much. We appreciate you coming back and sharing the updated information. Any questions that come in?
No, we can, thank you. Very good considerations.
All righty. Just to sort of reiterate, reiterate my position the first time, I thought we should have just moved to the 50%.
Okay.
Right, right away. And so my question to Counsel primarily at this point would be, how many of us sitting here think that right now, and this is not an affront, right now, the House, the Senate and the governorship is Republican, right? Who appears, and I say appears, right, to not have a big appetite for supporting local government in this fashion? So how many of us think that's going to change in the next two, three, four, five years?
None.
So you'll see and as appropriately stated, that with the bill 420, what was it?
420.
482?
482, yes.
482? Right now, it's basically saying, well, you don't have a choice now.
Yes.
You're sort of at 50%, right? I would hate for it to go to 20% next legislative session. 25% rather, though, they use quota increments. So what I'm saying in short is simply this. I, my recommendation, of course, we're not taking action today.
Correct.
Just for conversation purposes and we have your one-on-ones and so forth, is let's move to go to the 50% ASAP. I would also suggest that for, while, and I, and I fully understood and agree that if a private residence burnt down and they had to rebuild, it's not increasing the LOS at all.
Correct.
Right. And so my position would be then, don't add it, to it, just exempt it. If it was some big, a commercial piece where, you know, oh yeah. And if, and of course, you'll be speaking with the attorney to see if indeed that is, that is not considered discriminating against.
It's not. It's in your ordinance already, yeah.
So I would, you know, for that, I would say yes, absolutely. Because when they do, they're more than likely, if they're going in and they're rebuilding, they may be, you know, doing the sort of reverse retrofitting and actually increasing the LOS. So I think we should add that, you know, but not the private residence.
Okay.
And I think there was something else. And any land, and you discussed this as well, just in conversations and it's been public conversations as well, that whenever I've had discussions with potential developers and when they've come here as well, it's been discussed, that most of them have already stated that they donate perhaps like an acre and build a community center. Right, on, and although it's still part of that same contiguous people, piece of land, I would say that we should exempt that as well. I don't know that we should punish them, right, for giving us something.
Right.
So those would be the three recommendations I would have.
Okay. And once again, I just want to be clear, I wasn't trying to sway it any one way or the other.
Oh, no, 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 not at all.
It's just considerations so that moving forward, you can make the decision with both eyes open. That's all.
Necessary information, we would never be able to evaluate that as explicitly as you have.
Right. And in fact, my recommendations was born out of the information you shared with us and so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. And I, I just don't want us to be on the other side of the curve. Should something happen, then we look back and say, we should have.
We should have.
Now we missed that as well. There's a piece of property coming up right now. Don't we wish we had this in place now?
Correct.
Right. So my, my recommendation, let's just move to get that, get the 50% finalized and, and, yeah.
I agree with the recommendation, get this into. As soon as possible before we lose another option.
Understood. Okay. Sir?
Can you repeat the recommendation for the record? I couldn't hear it.
Just the recommendation and of course, it's not an action item, we're just giving information at this point. That, I guess, the consensus, if you would.
Someone else repeated in the microphone.
So the Counsel is, is, just by way of consensus or just in terms of verbal consensus at this point in time through a discussion, is that we move to have the 50% finalized. There's other things that I stated, but that would have to be discussions that would have to happen before it goes to our consultant to get the final version done. Because you may disagree with it, but of course, feel free to speak with the town manager regarding those and that we can get that information back to, to you.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
All righty. And I would suggest that once we get that information back, then at that point in time, anything that our attorney needs to be involved in as well, so that it doesn't have to come back here, then that way you're free to go ahead and finish up on things.
I was going to ask that. I don't necessarily know the protocol. I always come in prison here first based on his direction. But as, there's, there's the technical report, which is based on all the analysis and things and it kind of comes down to what you guys have recommended and told me today. But then there's just the additional consideration and if, based on what you said, if there's a consensus even on that, I could do a strike-through for the county attorney to look at in, in your ordinance right now to say, here's what I'm recommending to be taken out based on your direction. And then she would review it for legal sufficiency and determine if, like how to proceed.
Well, definitely. At that time, where it's, you're at the point where you're getting ready to finalize it, then of course, in consultation with the town manager and the attorney. So that when you come and present to us, the next time, you'll, here's the recommendation as understood by Counsel's directions and we'll be ready to go.
Fantastic. I didn't want to overstep.
Oh, no, 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 you're doing fine. That's why we have you. Right. You know, I defer to people who know there, know more than I do about things and you do, so we're leaning on you.
Okay. Any other questions for me?
The Counsel comments were playing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. There was one more thing I wanted to bring up. And I also asked for the city attorney or county attorney, town's attorney, too many meetings, to also verify this, but being, no matter what the numbers come out to be, you guys have a major shortfall to deal with when it comes to your infrastructure needs and capital improvement. As I was talking to my data analytics guy, we actually thought about, I don't know when the last time you guys have updated your building permit fees. And we tried to do research, there's no real Florida statute that regulates that, the way they do impact fees. So if you guys have not done that in a while, I would, maybe after we finalize this, see if you guys are okay with us looking into your impact fees in the surrounding municipalities and updating that to be a little bit more consistent with what most people are charging today so that between this and that, you can bridge some of that gap a little bit. So just a separate scope, but separate from this.
Okay. So once we get beyond this and we can analyze and.
Yes, absolutely.
You're saying that once we have the step completed with the impact fees voted on, then to go into, you said upgrading or updating our?
Yeah, just if you guys would consider having someone look at it and compare it, do a comparative analysis to other. If you guys haven't like this, if you guys haven't updated those in a while, that's also additional revenue that you guys are missing out on. So every little bit helps to bridge that gap.
And I think we should do that with brevity.
And that's something to be considered once we get beyond this and then we'll take a look at it and understand the efficacy of it. Okay. All righty, anything else?
No, sir. If you guys have no more questions, thank you for having me and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thanks so much and we appreciate all that you're doing out there for us.
I'm trying.
And we'll get to the final version shortly so that if anything were to happen, because I'm hoping something break over there soon and we don't want to be the ones.
You don't want to be stuck behind because you can't do it retroactively. The Florida statute doesn't allow that.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay. And thanks for the updated information. I appreciate it. Exactly. All righty, certainly. All righty, so Ken, you've had your report, PBSO, Amity, I'm sorry?
No, nothing specifically.
All righty. Councilwoman Davis?
No, I'm not there.
Okay, Councilwoman, okay, Councilwoman McConnell? Okay, Vice Mayor?
I think we've said enough and done what needs to be done for now. Thank you.
Okay. Well, some good work being done. Certainly appreciate it. Okay, and I have nothing as well. So with that, is there a motion for a agreement?
Thank you.
Motion has been moved by Vice Mayor and seconded by Councilwoman Davis. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And we'll say a sign. It is carried. Thanks so much. Have a great evening. Okay, we'll see you at the next meeting.
See, I stayed up like I was a teeny bopper last night.
They got me on the hot mic on that one.
You gotta cancel your Netflix subscription so you can go to bed. Oh, no, 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 I mean, hey. Yeah, I get caught up on those thumbnails. Start watching something that it moves and flips into another. Okay, okay. President said that and you get caught up and listen to all of them little clips.
You too, have a good one.
Okay, have a good evening, Amity. Shut this down here.